And our timer says one minute and 49 seconds. I'm going to take the liberty and give you the one minute warning. Okay, it is 7:22. I'm calling the meeting of the San Leandro City Council to order. Today is Monday, October 7th, 2024. It is 7:00 p.m. Would you please take the roll, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azavito.
Present.
Councilmember Ballou.
Present.
Councilmember Bowen.
Present.
Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Simon.
Present.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
All members are present?
We've got a quorum. Let's proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Viveros Walton, please.
...
Okay, the City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or the California Fair Employment and Housing Act, California Penal Code Sections 403 or 415, are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your message.
If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute window for general public comments, which will take place under Item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after Item 12, City Council Reports. Thank you.
So at this point in time, we will move to report on closed session action taken. Was there any?
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable actions were taken in closed session.
For the benefit of the public, we are in there for almost two hours, and I know it can be a bit opaque. But just to give you a little bit of color, we were speaking about the Marina, the bankruptcy proceedings involving the Marina, also looking at other matters involving litigation that the city may face, and finally, also considering labor negotiations, right? Because part of what we do is help set compensation for employees, and those are very sensitive topics that we don't do out in the public and that we do behind closed doors, and then finally come forward with a final agreement or final discussion ratification in the public so that everybody can see that. Let's talk very quickly, or let's
And our timer says one minute and forty-nine seconds. I'm gonna take the liberty and give you the one-minute warning. Okay, it is seven twenty-two. I'm calling the meeting of the San Leandro City Council to order. Today is Monday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. It is seven P. M. Would you please take the role, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azavito.
Present.
Councilmember Baloo.
Present.
Councilmember Bowen. Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Simon.
Present.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
All members are present?
We've got a quorum. Let's proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Viveros Walton, please. Okay, the City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and/or the California Fair Employment and Housing Act, California Penal Code, Sections four oh three or four fifteen, are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your message.
If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a thirty-minute window for general public comments, which will take place under Item Seven, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial thirty-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after Item Twelve, City Council Reports. Thank you.
So at this point in time, we will move to report on closed session action taken. Was there any?
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable actions were taken in closed session.
So for the benefit of the public, we were in there for almost two hours. And I know it can be a bit opaque, but just to give you a little bit of color, we were speaking about the Marina, the bankruptcy proceedings involving the Marina, also looking at other matters involving litigation that the city may face, and finally also considering labor negotiations, right? Because part of what we do is help set compensation for employees, and those are very sensitive topics that we don't do out in the public and that we do behind closed doors, and then finally come forward with a final agreement or final discussion ratification in the public so that everybody can see that. Let's talk very quickly, or let's move to Item Number Four, which is our recognitions. We've got a couple of recognitions today. So we're gonna start with Crime Prevention Month Declaration or Proclamation. So I think I've got Sergeant Calvin Watson, Supervisor of S. L. P. D. Crime Prevention Unit, yay! And we also have Hong Fan, who is the owner of H. K. Small Engines. You're a business owner here in the community. If you could come and stand up here and face that way, I'll let you hold that. And I'm gonna read from the proclamation, and then I'll give you a chance to share a few words. I don't know if you guys have coordinated already, but I'll let one of you speak. You guys decide. Okay, so whereas the vitality of the City of San Leandro depends on the safety of our neighborhoods, our schools, our workplaces and communities, and whereas people of all ages must be made aware of what they can do to prevent themselves or families, their neighbors, their workplaces, from being harmed by crime, and whereas the fear of crime threatens a community's health, prosperity, and quality of life, and whereas crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security, but they go beyond these. Because we must promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages, and whereas effective crime prevention programs excel because of partnership with public safety, city staff, other government agencies, civic groups, schools, faith communities, businesses, and community members, as they help nurture communal responsibility and shared pride. And two more. Whereas it's vitally important for cities, neighborhoods, businesses, and visitors to actively work together to solve and to prevent crime, and whereas the goal of our citywide United for Safety Initiative is to engage our entire community to participate in public safety, everybody working together for public safety, in order to prevent and reduce crime and making the City of San Leandro a great place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I Juan Gonzalez III, Mayor of the City of San Leandro, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Crime Prevention Month in the City of San Leandro, and urge all of you, I urge all community members and businesses to invest in the power of prevention and to work together, work collaboratively, to make the City of San Leandro a safer and stronger community. Who would like to say something?
We would like to, sorry, we would like to thank the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and esteemed council members, as well as the community. We graciously would like to accept this proclamation for me on behalf of the San Leandro Police Department, as well as the great City of San Leandro. If we continue to work on behalf with law enforcement, the community, as well as our business owners, we can make the city as great and safe as possible and hope this continues to go on.
Okay, and our second proclamation for the month is focused on Domestic Violence Awareness Prevention Month. We've got two people. We've got Marissa Seko from the Family Violence Intervention Unit, Family Violence Intervention Unit Manager at the Family Violence Law Center, F. V. L. C., helps diverse communities in Alameda County heal from domestic violence and sexual assault, advocating for justice and for healthy relationships. We also have Jessica Rogers, who's here, and she is the Domestic Violence Outreach Manager at Building Futures. Building Futures, its core mission is to build community with underserved individuals where they are safely and support, where they are safely and supportively housed, free from homelessness and free from family violence. We've got this for each of you. And then we'll read our proclamation for the public. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is observed each October to support all of those who have been affected by domestic violence, to recognize individuals and groups who have stepped forward to break that cycle of violence and to recommit to ending domestic violence in our community. And whereas this event evolved from the first day of unity observed in October of nineteen eighty-one by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, the intent of the initiative was to connect groups who were working together to end domestic violence. And whereas our community, the City of San Leandro, is committed to connecting victims to the resources they need, from emergency shelter and legal assistance to transitional housing support. Providers of such services in San Leandro include Building Futures, S. A. V. E., Save, Safe Alternative to Violent Environments, and the Family Violence Law Center. The City of San Leandro also actively works to stop violence before it starts. And whereas all members of the public can play a role in ending domestic violence by promoting healthy relationships, by speaking out when seeing acts of domestic violence, by standing with survivors, and by changing attitudes that perpetuate that cycle of abuse. And finally, whereas survivors of domestic violence know that they are not alone and that resources are available, no one should live in fear because they feel unsafe in their own home. Now therefore, I Juan Gonzalez III, Mayor of the City of San Leandro, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of San Leandro, and encourage all community residents to recognize the importance of speaking out against domestic violence and to support local efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing that they need.
I just wanna thank the City of San Leandro for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Unfortunately, domestic violence is still far more prevalent in our communities than we would like it to be, and I think it's really important that just if you or someone you know is experiencing any kind of harm in their relationships, I'd just encourage you to reach out to either of our services. We, Building Futures and Family Violence Law Center have twenty-four-hour crisis line support that's always available, any time of day or night. It's totally confidential, it's totally free, and we're here to support you.
I'll just say thank you, too, and that Building Futures, you know, we're local, we're in San Leandro, we have counseling, support group, court accompaniment, so do refer people, you know, to our services if you feel that they're needed.
And for those that don't know, Building Futures supports our efforts in outreach to our unhoused community throughout the city. The purple guys. Okay, we're gonna take a quick picture? Okay, so at this point in time, we're gonna move to our consent calendar. I'm curious if there are any amendments to our consent calendar. Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the consent.
Okay. Councilmember Azavito.
I'd like to second it.
So I've got a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, a second by Councilmember Azavito. Seeing no questions or further discussion, I'm gonna move to public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment online and no public comment in person.
Please proceed.
Doug, you may unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you very much. Good evening, Council. I'd like to comment on Item five B, and as time permits, maybe five A. I looked at the, uh, the nice designs under the transportation art maintenance item this evening, but I'm a little puzzled, why are we celebrating Lime Ricky, a type of highball and alcoholic beverage? I mean, maybe if we were in Martinez and we wanted to celebrate the martini, try to steal credit for that, it would make sense, but the Lime Ricky was purportedly invented in Washington, D. C. by a bartender named George Williamson, so I'm not really sure why we're doing that. I did learn from Sheila Marquesas a few years back that, that street art does, uh, does help traffic slowing, and along those lines, I just wanna flag for the council members, there is a group of volunteers you don't have to pay who are ready to repaint the Black Lives Matter street mural. That money was approved a few years ago by the Arts Commission, which was subsequently torpedoed, um, and the money was absorbed somehow or another, and now it requires one of you to sponsor it. So if you'd like more information, just ask me. With regards to the emergency spending limits, um, you know, it makes sense that as time goes on, inflation, uh, goes on, that, you know, you'd have to increase the limit, but, but an increase from fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars, uh, kinda makes me wonder what is going on. That's a, a four-fold increase, a three-hundred percent increase, so what do you have in mind that you might need to buy in an emergency? The city for several years has been, you know, struggling financially. It doesn't seem like we're quite in the clear yet, so I would think the prudent thing would be to approve an increase that might be a little lower, maybe a hundred thousand, not two hundred thousand. So I just would like more information. You know, I don't understand, is this like some kind of rainy day contingency? Again, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Yes, well, close public comment on this item. Come back to my counsel. Is there any further discussion or amendments to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
All votes are in. Motion passes unanimous, seven-zero.
Okay, let's move to Item Number Six. We have any city manager or city attorney reports? Start with city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple announcements. Wednesday, October ninth, is National Walk and Roll to School Day. Join the City of San Leandro as we encourage students, parents, and the whole community to walk or roll to school. It's a great way to promote healthy habits, reduce traffic, and support cleaner air. Don't forget to share your journey with us using the hashtag #WalkRollSL and tag at City of San Leandro. Also this Thursday, October tenth, from five P. M. to nine P. M., San Leandro Police Department personnel will be working alongside chili staff to serve customers and collect tips as donations for Special Olympics Northern California. All tips help to create inclusive communities where people with and without disabilities can make connections, develop healthy lifestyles, achieve success, and experience the joy of sports. And Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. And we do not have a city attorney report today, as we've already talked about in closed session, so let's move on to public comment. It's a time where members of the public can comment on items that are not listed on our agenda, but which are within the subject matter expertise, or jurisdiction, I should say, of the council. How many commenters do we have in person, and how many do we have online?
Mr. Mayor, we have six commenters in person and one online.
Perfect. So why don't we start with our commenter online? We'll give the two minutes, and then we'll come to the six people in our chambers.
Okay, perfect. Douglas, you may unmute yourself.
Me again. I would like to bring up two things. The first is, um, I'm concerned about communications emanating from the city clerk's office to candidates for office in the City of San Leandro, uh, which I think potentially opens the city to liability for violation of First Amendment rights. The, the general justice, this is a warning that lawn signs are, uh, being, uh, displayed unlawfully. I, I can understand things like, uh, you know, size limit on the signs and, um, you know, needing to register with the city before you start posting, and the, and the requirement to clean them up afterwards, uh, but I, I, maybe, maybe just a little education is in order. A person is permitted to display a sign in the windshield of their vehicle when the car is parked. I think the ordinance you referred to, it has to do with, um, you know, moving advertising for businesses. This is not that. Uh, of course, when somebody wants to drive, they have to remove the sign or they wouldn't be able to see. Likewise, um, Caltrans property is fair game. Caltrans trans permits political signage under Section five four zero five point three of the State Outdoor Ad Act, uh, which says you have to wait till ninety days before the election, you have to pick them up ten days afterwards, the limit here is thirty-two square feet, and I would just note that among California highway designations, it includes all of Davis Street and all of East Fourteenth, so that's, those are places where signs can be put. Finally, uh, on a different matter, I'm happy to see the Rules Committee is finally taking up, uh, housing reform. Uh, I just would like this to pass to council under the strongest possible term, so let's make sure there's a, a cap on annual rent increases in order to keep housing, um, affordable, that there is a just cause requirement for evicting tenants, uh, that we have a, a rent registry going in San Leandro, and also that our rent review board is actually representative, not led by the wolf, uh, in the.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
Okay, so we will, we will close public comment online, and we will come into our chamber and open up public comment here.
I will read a couple people so you can get ready to queue. Mike Katz-Lakabe, then Melissa Wolf, and then Sarah Rosendez. Oh, wait, sorry.
Sir?
Try again.
Okay, there we go. Good, Honorable, hey, hey. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, and members of the public. My name is Mike Katz-Lakabe, and I would like to take this opportunity to salute the continued bravery of the San Leandro Police Officers Association. When San Leandro first hired its first African-American police chief, the San Leandro Police Officers Association bravely stepped forward to oppose him before he was actually sworn in as police chief. Once Chief Pridgen was sworn in, the San Leandro Police Officers Association bravely opposed changes in policy supported by the chief, despite evidence showing that these changes in policies would improve policing in San Leandro. The San Leandro Police Officers Association has a long history of bravely supporting political candidates that fear monger, using the issue of public safety, even when or especially when the information is inaccurate or misleading. And last week, the San Leandro Police Officers Association bravely endorsed the recall of Pamela Price, our first African-American district attorney, despite knowing that the policies she has implemented will reduce recidivism and lead to improved public safety. The San Leandro Police Officers Association bravely stands against the reasonable reforms that Pamela Price has brought forward as district attorney. It is clearly thanks to the San Leandro Police Officers Association's long history of courageous stances that crime no longer plagues our city, and the people of San Leandro place absolute faith in our police force. With such outstanding levels of courageousness and bravery, why change? And just if it wasn't clear, that was sarcasm. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Wolf, Sarah Rosendez, and then Bronze Courtney.
Hello, my name is Melissa Wolf. I live on Garcia, and, uh, I wanted to bring attention to, uh, violence that we have in our, an ongoing situation of violence that we have in our neighborhood. It's blight and it's nuisance. We have a mentally ill woman. I do a lot of gardening in front of my house. I've lived in my house for ten years. She lives two doors down from me. When I walk out of my house, quite often, I am met with expletives, um, racism, rings screamed at me, and, um, it is just an impossible situation to be able to go outside. I am currently working on my ability to walk again, and so I don't feel like I live in a healthy neighborhood. I have a number of neighbors that are under siege in this situation. She brings a lot of violence, drug addiction, homeless, uh, people, homeless encampment in our house. She also has living animals. She is abandoned by her family, and she is severely mentally ill. Tried to bring this to our District Five, uh, Joa Bowen, and we haven't gotten any results, and we are under siege. We are not in a healthy situation by any means. I don't feel safe walking outside of my house. Um, she set fires a couple of weeks ago to her car and was heading down to my house that. She set fires a couple of weeks ago to her car and was heading down to my house at around 11 o'clock. She went to mental hospital for three days and was back again. And so this is our situation. I wanted to bring attention because I don't know, I've lived in San Francisco for over 20 years. I've never been in a situation like this, but I feel terribly unsafe. I don't want to live here anymore and I can't afford to move. So we have to think about getting a restraining order as a neighborhood. And to me, that is not safe and that is complete and utter violence. Thank you so much.
Time is up. Sarah Rosendez, Bronze Courtney, and Jamar Mears.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rosendez. I'm neighbor of Melissa and all my neighbors behind me. I'm living next to Anita, the one we're talking about on 171 Garcia Avenue. So I have two kids. She's being harassing us. I have a dog. She's been harassed to kill my dog. I was finished yesterday, my Halloween decoration. I couldn't finish because she was outside calling me names all the time. And we just tired of this. She's been, this has been, I think, seven years already with this. We've been calling the cops. They can do anything. We're doing now a restraining order because of her. It's been back and forth. Nobody's helping us. We're here because of her situation. Her backyard is a mess. We have been rats for a few years. The situation inside the house, she has a bunch of cats in the house. It smells like hell inside. And the next neighbor, they got a garage on fire a few years ago. We've been helping to clean her garage. Nobody's helping us because it's really bad, burn health too. So we're here for this, for you guys can see and do anything about her and my neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Bronze Courtney, Jamar Mears, and it looks like maybe Josie or Jose Rosendez.
Hello, council members. My name is Bronze Courtney. I'm a resident of your fine city, and it is just a coincidence that this is Violence Prevention Month. And so I'm here to support my other neighbors around Anita Diaz. Please write this name down, who lives at 171 Garcia Avenue. I live in the neighborhood and we are experiencing her harboring guests that break into cars, home invasion, and violence. So if you have looked at the records at 171, there should be a long list of how many times the police have showed up for our complaints. Also, indecent exposure of her guests playing with themselves on the front lawn, use of illicit substances on the porch, crack cocaine, heroin, what you name it, they're doing it. And then racial slurs, calling us the N-word in relation to discrimination against our sexuality, calling us the F-word, endangerment to herself, jumping in front of cars. So she's endangering herself and neighbors and people passing by because she jumps in front of a car whose insurance is going to get it, our insurance, right? And then we've got the documentation and the calls to the property is the proof. I'm about results-based accountability. So it's like, we've got the documentation, the police should have it, you should have it, everybody should have it. If you look up that address, there should be like a legal pad this long of how many times the police have had to show up to her house, can't get in, her house is a hot mess. It's always something going on. Like I've had to go out there and almost fight with some of her neighbors because they're breaking in our cars. If you've looked at the address, people have got shot at our corner, okay? There's swastika signs that are going on. She's she's mentally ill. And I told her, I said, I'm going to city council. Come here, plead your case. She's not here. So this is this is something that all of us neighbors have been dealing with. We've tried to work with her. We've tried to be empathetic. We've tried to be compassionate due to her mental illness and substance issues. But at this point, it's a major problem. 171 Garcia Street, San Leandro, around the corner from 7-Eleven. Please do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamar Mears and Jose Rosendez.
My name is Jamar Mears, and I'm also here about Anita Diaz at 171 Garcia. I haven't slept. It's been over 10 years. We've been dealing with this every day. We're calling, I've emailed Bowen so many times. We've emailed the mayor. I've emailed, you know, the police department, everything. Every day, this lady is calling me a nigger twice a day. When I'm on my way to work, it's there goes the nigger. When I come home from work, the nigger is back home. My dad lives with me. He's 70 years old and he's called the nigger every day. It's obsessive. This lady, I'm the one who called about two weeks ago. She set her car on fire, her home on fire. She shot the Melissa house on fire and my house on fire. And luckily I caught this, so I'm not sleeping because all this stuff is happening every night. Every night I'm scared I don't know what to do because something's going to go on. I have to wake up this morning late to work because another one of her, she goes to 7-Eleven and hangs out and she brings all the drug addicts back and they all sleep at her house. And every day our cars are broken into, our homes are broken into, and I have to pick up trash. I just dump trash. I have a video, they just dump all kind of trash right in front of my home. So I have to pick up trash just every day. I'm 24, look at my hair. I'm 24 years old. But it's crazy. I have not slept and it's been 10 years. This lady is outrageous. They set our neighbor at 183 Garcia, his garage on fire. It's been about a year. All this stuff is just still sitting there. All the burnt material is just still sitting there. This guy's like over 80 years old, a veteran, trying to find services to help jack out. He has no money. We're just living, this is insane. They're robbing us at gunpoint. This is about a year ago. Her friends, once again from 7-Eleven, these are just not drug addicts. These are people, are criminals with guns. They robbed us at gunpoint, stole the Cadillac converter, came back two days straight. It's, 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 I can't even speak. It's crazy. I'm frustrated. I feel unhurt. I feel unsafe. We're not sleeping and I don't know what else to do. And I can't pick up and leave. A lot of people who are renters of our neighborhood, they have left because they have the ability to go and leave. I'm a homeowner. Most of us are homeowners. I can't, there's nowhere for me to go. I'm still stuck in danger. Please help. We're asking for support. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Rosendez.
I don't have much to say because they say every time we're not going to repeat ourselves. So but it's really sad, a father to hear that lady harassed my daughter, but with words I don't want to say. It's really bad. Just please help us, please do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that was the last public commenter.
Okay, so I'll close public comment on that. And unfortunately, our human services director is ill today, so she's not available. Otherwise, I'd say let's have a little caucus outside. But your points are duly noted and we will be getting back to you. So thank you for coming in. Thank you. So at this point in time, we're going to continue through our agenda. Today, we don't have any public hearings and we don't have any staff presentations or action items. But we do have an opportunity for council members to schedule additional items and then we'll move on to our council reports. So at this point in time, I'm going to go to Councilmember Blue.
Mr. Mayor and fellow members of the council, this might surprise you. In eight years, I have, almost eight years, I have avoided bringing anything to the council under an item 14 or item 11 that I thought needed to be done fairly quickly. Tonight, I come to you with a recommendation that does not fall under the urgency requirement in our handbook because it's not public safety related, et cetera. But I do think time is of the essence and I want to ask the council's support in directing staff to begin the process by bringing to Rules Committee agenda item to discuss honoring the honorable Ellen Corbett, who probably did more as a San Leandro representative in her life politically than anyone else, with some sort of honor, either naming a building, a room, a park, something. But I'd like to see them bring that to the Rules Committee if they can. I cannot put a timeline on it because our handbook forbids that. But I think if we can, if we can give some sort of direction to the city manager or maybe a kind of a thumbs up, or I don't know how we can go about this. And then individually, one-on-one, you can talk to her about whether you think it's important or not. I would really appreciate that. The family is on board. They would be honored. I won't bore you right now with the full length of everything she did. But she was the first female directly elected mayor of San Leandro, and she also was the Senate Majority Leader, second woman to be a California Senate Majority Leader in Sacramento, and a long list of accomplishments. Not, not the least of which was always looking out for the little guy or the little gal. She was really committed to that. So I'm just kind of asking for council support to give some sort of direction to start that. It would go on the agenda list, I believe. But I think one-on-ones you could have with the city manager and talk to her about whether that's a big priority or not and whether staff has the capacity.
Do we have other requests? Okay, so that will go on to the list and will allow council members to weigh in individually during their times with the city manager and see what the feel on that would be. So we will continue with item number 12, which is council member reports, calendars, and announcements, et cetera. Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. On Friday, October 4th, I attended the National Legacities LGBTQ Low Board Meeting, where we discussed our upcoming conference in Tampa on, from November 12th through November 16th. We will be putting together a dinner. And Mayor Castor from Tampa, who was the first lesbian mayor, will be one of our speakers at our constituency group meeting. We also coordinated a dinner at the Edison Restaurant in Tampa. And we're also coordinating the, our first summit with, in collaboration with the Victory Institute, December 5th through 6th, where we have three great panel discussions that I'll be coordinating with, with that team and I'll have more information on that. That's that for me.
Councilmember Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a mix of items of concerns and then a report. So I'll kind of just go through it. Since I do have the residents of Garcia here and I've, I want to speak broadly to some issues that have been coming up that I've been talking to residents about, and it's to do with mental health and the mental health support in the community and ways that we can try to help residents in our city, those that are undergoing some duress and obviously to neighbors and residents who are also experiencing some of the impacts of that. And so I think that if the residents want to stay until the end of this meeting, we can have a little sidebar. There have been a lot of conversations happening specifically on your street as well, so I want to address that. And another issue that I have been talking to residents about, and I related to some meetings I've been attending, are to do with youth tobacco use prevention. And this is something that at the middle school and high school level specifically has been problematic. And so I can't remember if it was on Wednesday or Thursday, but I attended a seminar on tobacco enforcement for local elected officials and different ways that we can enforce some of the, to ensure that youth are not using tobacco. And I will tell you that it was, as a parent, really scary to hear about some of the things that kids are doing these days. So it was very informative for me and certainly I'll continue to share that information as I continue to explore more. On September 26th, I attended the East Bay Division meeting along with the mayor. And at that meeting, I was elected to the East Bay Division's board to represent Alameda County at large on their board. And so next week, I will be attending the Cal City Summit in Long Beach, where I will officially inaugurated into that role. I also want to mention that on Wednesday is the last farmer's market and I will be at a booth at the farmer's market then to meet with residents and to share some of the things that the city has been working on. I want to call out what we are of this month as Domestic Violence Prevention Month and want to give a shout out to Building Futures and mention that one way that the community can participate is to do dinner donations for the shelter. I actually am booking dinner for the shelter every month. And yesterday was my day. And I will say that it is a really great way to be able to bring people together to volunteer, especially if there are kids, to speak to domestic violence prevention, talk about the issues that are a part, are adjacent to having to have an emergency shelter, which we do have in San Leandro. City Manager Cameron mentioned National Walk and Roll Day, which is also on Wednesday. And so I would encourage all of the council members to visit the schools that are located in their district. The school district obviously has signed on board for that. I will be at both Washington Elementary as well as Bancroft Middle School and really encouraging the kids to walk or bike to school because pedestrian safety is a very important issue right now. And I am also part of ACTC. And I just want to mention one statistic is that 8% of all roads in Alameda County account for 71% of pedestrian collision. And Bancroft Avenue is one of those high injury networks. And so I just want to make sure that we're calling that out. And so when you're speaking to families and attending these schools, to encourage them to walk safely. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Blue, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a brief comment on an upcoming event that I think the public may want to know about. The San Leandro Historical Society is sponsoring a San Leandro trivia B and pizza lunch. This doesn't happen very often. It's on Saturday, November 2nd, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. It's trivia about San Leandro. It'll be held at the Altamira Club, 561 Lafayette Street. Here's what doesn't happen very often. It's free if you bring your own lunch. If you want to partake in the pizza with a salad buffet, it's $12.51. I don't know where they came up with that, but it looks like it's going to be a fun day. I personally will not be able to make it, but I thought people might want to know. They gave some examples. One of the questions is about the Alameda County Courthouse, what's there now? And other things like two-story schools, et cetera. Looks like it really could be fun for people that are into San Leandro trivia. So I just wanted to showcase and shine a spotlight on that. November 2nd, Saturday, 12 noon to 3:00 PM, Altamira Club. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Simon, please.
Yes, just an issue of concern I'd like to raise. Well, first, I'd like to thank those residents from coming out in Garcia. That's really good showing that you made. Councilmember Bowen, meeting afterwards, I'd like to touch bases to. This is very, very concerning what I'm hearing. I couldn't imagine being called those words for so many years. So thank you for coming out. Something has to be done about that. I also want to give a shout out to our new chief, Chief Everett. And she, in September, was at a 30 by 30 initiative that brings Bay Area police chiefs, sheriffs, and DAs to Oakland to recruit women into law enforcement careers. So I was very excited to see her in the front page of the Oakland Post for reaching out, bringing more women into police careers. So congratulations, Chief Everett. Thank you.
I will wrap up quickly here by just highlighting a couple of things. Bay Area Air Quality Management District was a big supporter of a California state bill to ban the sale of leaded aviation fuel. And that was signed by the governor last week. So we're really excited about the outcome of those efforts. Filipino-American Heritage Month. I don't know that we've got a proclamation, but it is Filipino-American Heritage Month and we are particularly joyful about the many contributions of the Filipino-Americans. We have approximately 10% of all of San Leandro is Filipino-American. I think like one of our council members, myself, also attended an event this weekend celebrating Filipino culture here in the City of San Leandro. Ava Community Energy, where I sit on the Board of Directors representing the City of San Leandro, some great evolution changes in the portfolio of power that's being used to further reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We expect the Bright Choice product to decrease greenhouse gas emissions from, or it was at 55% greenhouse gas emitting electricity back about four or five years ago. It will be 91% clean starting next year. But I think that continued effort of focus on sustainability as a board member, it's something that I'm particularly proud of. Highlight again, the walk and roll. The city manager highlighted it. Councilmember Bowen highlighted it. It's something that's really important. We need to make our city more walkable, more bikeable, so that people feel safe, that it's really a place where kids can get around the city safely as well as adults. A couple more things. We do have a, particularly for retirees, for seniors, Liz Ortega, our Assembly Member, is sponsoring a fraud prevention event amarro during the day from 11 to noon. Unfortunately, it's not online, but for any seniors that are listening, it is at 1200 Russell Way in Hayward, 1200 Russell Way in Hayward from 11 to noon. The focus is on scams that target seniors specifically and take advantage of the vulnerabilities, the trusting oftentimes that seniors bring to their interactions. Last, I'd like to highlight two organizations that undertook health fairs this last weekend. We have the Vietnamese, Vietnamese-American Community Center of the East Bay, which is based here in San Leandro, brought in students from UCSF, from UC Berkeley, brought attending physicians, and met the needs of many vulnerable individuals in our broader community, many of whom don't speak English particularly well. And so that ability to interact with a doctor, with someone who's knowledgeable in medicine, and to be able to meet those needs, was a very powerful thing. We also had another health fair at Praises of Zion Church over on Bancroft. We also had a, another health fair at Praises of Zion Church over on Bancroft. And so I think that community coming together to recognize that everybody needs a little bit of help, that's what makes San Leandro a great place. So thank you to these organizations and to, to all those that are keeping us active. And then I'll close with this. I had a wonderful opportunity to run into a, a community member at the library. I guess it was one or two weeks ago. Actually, did a little video posting about this person. And her reaction to all the positive things that are happening in our city around community events and whether it's the Oktoberfest or the art festival or the Spooktacular that we had this Friday, there's just a lot of events going on. And I think as we, as a council, focus on quality of life and are really trying to drive that increase in events and opportunities for people to act and interact and support each other, I think it's something that we want to keep uplifting. So thank you to all the city staff